Hi, thirty guys. Thank you. Roll call.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsy.
Here.
Brenda Simmons. Craig Scott.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. I have something I'd like to add under unfinished business. I'd like to add a possible millage for the jail. Any other additions or corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with addition.
We have a motion? Do we have support?
I support.
Support, motion from Commissioner Scott, support Commissioner Wiltsy. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, any declarations of conflicts of interest, commissioners?
I have none.
Item four, review of minutes, July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting minutes.
I've read the minutes of July eleventh. I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion from Commissioner Scott.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltsy. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item four B, July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, closed session, meeting minutes. I believe those were all given to you guys.
I've read them and I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Scott.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltsy. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four C, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I've read the minutes and I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
Motion, Commissioner Scott. Support from Commissioner Mayhew. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, public comments on agenda item manners only. Come on up, sir. Is this an agenda item?
Yes, ma'am.
Please. Your name? Where are you from?
Good evening. My name is Phil Durst. I am here representing the Ogumah County EDC.
Go ahead, sir.
So, in your agenda, you have an item called claims. One of those claims, as I assume that you will prove, will be the first installment of a loan by the Ogumah EDC to a business, a total of forty thousand dollars that we're lending to a business to get that business really up and growing. So, I want to thank you for your role in this, which of course is to handle the money from the USDA road development and then to act as, as the body that gives that money to us so that we can give it to the individual. So, we're so glad to be making our second revolving fund loan from the Ogumah EDC. Thank you for being a part of that. We hope to increase business in this county and that's what we're working to do.
Thank you.
Might be back here.
Any other public comment and agenda items?
Swear to God.
Any public comment on the phone? Correspondents, we received correspondence from the district health department number two related to marijuana operation oversight grant performance report that has been received and filed. Consent agenda. I think we need to take these individually.
Yes.
Item seven, a resolution to authorize adjustments to the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Ogumah County budget. This resolution is sponsored by administrator slash controller Timothy Delahoney. On September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution twenty-three dash one-three-two to approve general appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act requires that local units of government periodically adjust the budget to reflect revised revenue and expenditure levels. Approval of the resolution will authorize and acknowledge general fund revenues increases of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and five dollars and expenditure increases of one hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. This resolution also approves budget adjustments for nineteen special funds.
Make a motion to authorize the adjustments.
Motion from Commissioner Scott.
Here.
I support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltsy. Discussion, Commissioner Simmons? Do you have something you wanted to add?
I'm looking for it.
Chief.
You found it.
I don't know which way to.
I believe I watched the video. You guys talked about this pretty, pretty detailed on the committee of the whole. Anything else to add to that? Roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Charles Wiltsy.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item seven B, resolution to authorize negative cash balance. This resolution is sponsored by the committee of the whole. When a negative cash balance is present, it is customary to avoid showing it in an annual audit by moving the overdrawn amount into a liability count and setting up the entry into automatically reversed to shift the withdrawn amount back into the cash account at the beginning of the next fiscal year. At the end of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, county auditors prepared a general fund journal entry to borrow five hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund to offset a negative cash balance and then redirect that the entry be reversed at the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Similar journal entries have been executed for many years to show balanced cash and cash equivalents at the end of the fiscal year. Approval of the resolution would authorize transfer of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the ARPA fund to eliminate the negative cash balance in the general fund.
I'll make a motion, we accept the resolution.
Motion, Commissioner Wiltsy?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Discussion?
I have some discussion.
Go ahead.
I think we got too many irons in the fire right now to make that decision right now. You know, there's too, there's too many unanswered questions about other areas in this county right now. Jail being one of them, budget being one of them. No, I say no right now. To me, it's no, because there's too many unknowns.
The last time we discussed.
Commissioner Scott, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Sorry for jumping in.
Go ahead.
Last time we discussed this, you wanted to wait till you saw a balanced budget. We've had a balanced budget presented. It's here. This is, this has been on the, this has been right up here for four years. We've been seeing this every meeting. This is one of these tough decisions to make. Or another dent in the can. Another boot mark in the can.
Commissioner Wiltsy, do you have anything?
I'll just same comment I normally have on this topic. I mean, we're making all these hard decisions to get this county figured out financially. We have the money to take care of this. I know what Commissioner David has said, let's do this over the course of four years or a plan to space this out. We have the money. We still would have eight hundred plus thousand dollars in ARPA funds. This has to get taken care of. In order to fix a financial issue, a problem, a massive problem that we have, you have to start flat, flush. We're making all these big decisions to get this county in the direction it needs to go financially. We have to get rid of our negative cash flow. We just have to. We have an opportunity. We can do this. Still have plenty of money to put in the right places. We do need to figure out what money we're going to spend on the buildings, you know, to help save money with utility costs and what have you. But we have an opportunity to take care of this and it needs to be taken care of.
I don't disagree with that statement. I agree this needs to be taken care of. I think we're all entitled to our opinions of how to do this. I agree with you. We do need a plan in place. I don't think a quick fix is the answer. I agree. We need a, like, like we're, we're doing now, headed in the right direction. We need a four-year plan. Obviously, this is not an illegal practice. It has been going on for, for years. I agree. It's not best practice. But we have already dedicated two million dollars in the last four years of these ARPA funds. Um. I'm not okay with this at this point. I don't disagree with coming up a plan and I would like to see a plan very quickly of how to eliminate this. This didn't happen overnight. I don't think the quick fix is the answer. But I would like to see a written plan in motion to this, for this to be resolved before we leave this seat.
One more comment?
Go ahead.
If we stick to our plan with the tax revolving fund and this year being the last year of taking money from it and starting next year, if, if the money stays in there and we don't take money out of it, we will build a bigger reserve. In four years, we'll build a bigger reserve than we have in ARPA money now. We're taking upwards of five hundred thousand dollars a year from the tax revolving fund. Now, if we, well, we've not, not last year because we, we were getting off of it, but we can, we can get well over a million dollars in four years if we do not touch the tax revolving fund. And that, in tax revolving fund, one of the primary uses for it is large capital expenses. So, it's, we already have a fund there. It's just that we've been taking from it. We need to, we've had a four-year plan. We're at the end of the four-year plan. Let's not go backwards and, and get away from that four-year plan. Let's start saving it and use that for that capital expense. That's what it's designed for.
I don't think that this saying, say, I don't think that not doing this is getting away from the plan.
Okay.
So, wonder if something big.
Two-step thing. I mean, it's this, and then we have to pass a budget. If, if, I mean, you can, you can turn around, take more money out of ARPA and you can take more money out of the tax revolving fund and kick the can and other, they could, they can other annual twelve-month kick of it if you want.
And, and we can also come back to this when we, we do get our, our budget. I, I, I hear you. Again, I do want to solve this problem, but I, I think it needs to be over a period of time so that we don't end up right back here. Any other comments?
I agree with that. I just, this is a working document. There hasn't been any approved balanced budget. It's not in the send yet. There's still some modifications being made to it. I want to, I want to wait. I mean, we have until the end of September anyway, so it doesn't have to happen at the very minute.
Commissioner Mayhew.
I ain't been for it and I still not.
Roll call vote.
Charles Wiltsy.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
No.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
No.
Roger Mayhew.
No.
Item seven C, resolution to authorize negotiations for inmate housing. This resolution is sponsored by administrator slash controller Timothy Delahoney. The financial condition of Ogumah County requires consideration of expenditure reductions for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Michigan statute requires that each organized county shall, at its own cost and expense, provide at the county seat thereof a suitable and sufficient jail and keep the same in good repair. In lieu of providing a jail, each county may contract with other counties for the use of such county, county's jails, but shall maintain a lockup which meets the standards established by the Michigan Department of Corrections. The county has an obligation to provide adequate funding to the sheriff to operate or contract for a jail and/or lockup, including providing for the medical needs of inmates housed in the jail. Approval of the resolution will authorize the law enforcement committee and administrator slash controller to negotiate with Roscommon County toward an agreement to house Ogumah County prisoners. Any such negotiated agreement shall become effective only upon a final approval of the Board of Commissioners.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion, Commissioner Scott.
I support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltsy. Discussion? Go ahead.
Go ahead. I just like make comment, obviously now, especially the last two, three weeks, and this has been more of a conversation of the public and people understand that what we're looking into, as we're looking into other areas of cost-saving measures. All this is, is letting Tim dive a little more into conversations with Roscommon County and in those conversations, we need to find out what type of contract we'd be looking at. I think all of our costs still for what we have here from ten, there's still some questions and we need to work on that. And I just think it's something that we, at this point in time, we need to look into and I support the fact of us talking with them to see what type of numbers we possibly could get together. But again, you know, everything like, like Brenda just said, everything's still in motion and work. We're still not, I'm still not a hundred percent confident with some of these numbers. Obviously, the sheriff department doesn't agree that it, the jail doesn't agree that, you know, what we're proposing is going to work. I mean, obviously going into that right there, we would be losing if this would happen. So, we have to have continuous conversation on this. We have to sit down at the table and have some good, strong, hard talks. We got to fi- figure out, you know, what possible options we have from Roscommon County. So, there's still a lot we got to get figured out here.
Commissioner Simmons.
During my talking to people in the last couple of months, as far as this jail goes here, I'm starting to come around to let the people make the decision as far as the jail goes. Let's put a millage on the ballot for November to see if we can, not have to and just keep it here. And the way it's going right now is, you know, the expenses keep increasing significantly year after year. I'd say right now, probably take two and a half mils to put on the ballot to pay for that jail.
Right now, the question is, are you okay with, with our administrator moving forward with talks with Roscommon?
He, he can keep it going, but I think we need to see this village to pass for the jail first. If it does, that'll be a immediate point.
I'm in favor of this. I think communication and conversation needs to happen so we have some concrete numbers, some concrete facts. I think it would help a lot of the confusion and a lot of the talk. We're not agreeing to anything, but I am in favor of moving forward with conversation. Commissioner Mayhew.
Where does the next place closest? How far is the next jail?
From Roscommon?
Yeah, if we don't get them.
That'll have to be, there's one in Saginaw, there's one in Alpena.
Claire is certainly there.
I mean, if they can't hold them all, the next place, it's going to be a waste.
It'll be further, yes.
So, I, I think that will be all part of conversation with, with Roscommon, how many they, they are able to take and we need, we need information, factual information.
Comment, if it's, is to continue negotiation to find out the costs and stuff like that, that is fine, but I also think you need to find out if the people want to keep the jail here open.
We'll get there.
All right.
Uh, roll call, this is no money. I guess let's still go ahead with a roll call vote.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes, for negotiations, yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsy.
Yes.
Claims total was three hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. I will make a motion for claims.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltsy. He and I reviewed them. I did reach out to Tracy with some questions that we had. Some big things we seen on there was a Miller construction for the transit, which was a hundred and four thousand dollars, I believe. The EDC was on there. What else we see? There's a, there was some training on there, a couple of days worth of training. A commissary, those were supplies like you had thought. What else do we see on there? Everything was pretty standard. The, the food costs in that were a little bit more because there was none in there from the previous two weeks. So, that was a, a pretty large sum there. There was nothing from the sheriff or the corrections from the previous meeting. So, that's why those numbers were a little larger. Any question on, did you have anything, Commissioner Wiltsy?
And just the, that large hundred thousand plus for the transit, that was for the new construction of our bus storage and bus wash and ninety-five plus percent of that is paid through grant funding.
There were some elections on there too, Brett, I seen. There's something for elections. It was, it wasn't that large, but there was a.
Yeah, it was August. Supplies.
Have we heard anything? Are we getting any reimbursement from?
We're, Tim and I are meeting tomorrow morning, first thing, and then I should have, and we should know what's going on.
Guess I jumped in on there, but I did, I do remember seeing elections he and I talked about in there. Any questions on claims? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsy.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Item nine, unfinished business. I added on there the millage for the jail. Reason, I think, I think this was brought up one time in the past. We are now talking about putting a animal on there in November. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions. There's a lot of controversy back and forth as far as keeping the jail open or not keeping the jail open. We are utilizing tax dollars of individuals to pay for that jail. I think it should be their decision, or at least they should help us in making that decision. I think that would help. Also, the public has a lot of questions. I know we're all getting when we go to our township meetings. I think it would help for accountability. I, I'm a pretty advocate. I'm feeling very strongly about putting this on for a millage in November to help the, for the public to help us make this, this decision.
Question.
Go ahead.
Brett, what's the date? I know we're.
August thirteenth.
Oh, August thirteenth?
Yeah.
That's not too far away.
No.
We could get it for reaching everything on before August thirteenth.
Comments, Commissioner Scott.
Okay, so is this the ultimatum? If this fails, then we do something else?
Well, I think we've given him permission to move forward with numbers.
Well, I know, I know, but I mean, is, is this the thought pattern? If this, if they voted down, then we're making a change.
I think, I think if the voters voted down, I think it will help us as far as making the decision. I'm only one vote. I'm only one person.
Right, so what is the other consensus?
I don't know if we can answer that until we have numbers in front of us. I don't know if that's a fair question directed towards me.
Well, I'm just asking the whole board. I mean, I'm just throwing this out there. I mean, normally, normally a department doesn't want us to put something on because if, if it fails, that the commissioners would interpret that as a, that's when I first brought up the road patrol millage in two thousand and eighteen. The sheriff at that time said, no, I don't want it. And I asked a couple of people and they said, well, we, if you put it on there and it fails, that's, the commissioners are going to cut us all off. And I said, no, that wasn't the plan at that time to do that. We were just looking for an alternative way of paying for it. And so, in two thousand and eighteen, we didn't put it on the ballot. In two thousand and twenty, we did and it passed. But there was no, there was no, at, at that time, there was no ultimatum on it.
And, and if you're directing it towards me, I, I don't look at it as an ultimatum.
Talk to you because you're the chairman.
I don't look at it as an ultimatum, but I think it will help us make the decision moving forward on top of all the data that's going to be gathered in the meantime.
Okay, so are we going to include the cost of the payment in this also?
You mean the bond?
The bond.
Well, we could, don't necessarily have.
It should have been, it should have been in the first place. They should have had a millage for that.
How about if we start, how about if we start with, are you guys, how do you guys feel about a millage on? Let's start with that question before we start talking about an amount. Are you guys okay with moving forward with, with conversation about a millage?
Yes, I am.
Commissioner Mayhew. Commissioner Mayhew.
That don't bother me. And the other thing is, is they got more time to work on their end of it. If they got till November.
Commissioners, Wiltsy.
Well, we originally talked about possible millage for jail. At first, my first thought was, I strongly agreed with it. You know, and then we, we had talked about it for a while, then in May, we saw what happened with what we had, you know, at the ballot box and we know where our constituents are. They're, they're frustrated. They're disappointed in government. You know, they have less money in their pockets than they did four years ago. You know, we have four extremely important villages, extremely important villages to our county, to our county residents coming up on August sixth. And every day I see more on social media, the negativity, the pushback, this DDA issue. I mean, every day that's getting built up more and more and more. So, we have that now on top of people just not wanting to spend any more money. So, I'm, my main focus is we need those villages to pass. Again, those villages support resident, many residents of our county that need these villages. So, my thought is asking for another millage is going to piss the people off even more, the fact that going into the voting booth here for the early voting and August sixth. And that, that, I struggle with that. But yet also, this is a huge, huge decision and it's, it's such a major decision that I think it's tough to put that on the, on the shoulders of five people. I truly do. I'm very new at this. I spend a lot of time at this. I love our county. I want to get this right. If we would, if we would move forward with talks of a millage, I'd be willing to do that, but I would not be willing to, to have any talks if we literally are going to say a two-point-five mil for this. I mean, that's just, to me, no way in hell. I would talk about something to help supplement it, you know, one, one, even one-point-oh, if we can do a one-point-oh millage, see if the voters want it, and then we as, as a county, as law enforcement board, with the sheriff, with the undersheriff, with Tom at the corrections, we need to sit down and we all need to look at each other and say, okay, let's put our egos aside. Let's look at this. How can we be better today than we've been in the past? How can we save money on food costs? How can we save money on utilities? How can we do all of this? And I think we can do that. And by doing that, we can save money. So, I'm willing to do it, but I'm not willing to do it at two-point-five millage. And I'm saying we need to have more communication, our stakeholders. We've got to be able to have more respect for each other. We've got to be able to sit down at a table and get this stuff figured out for what's best for the constituents of this county.
When, when you make the statement, respect for each other, I guess, can you clarify? You're talking about us five?
No, all of us, all of us stakeholders.
My, my concern also to address you, Commissioner Scott, is, is if five of us do make this decision, whatever it may be, without the voters having a say in it, that there's going to be from specific departments, there's going to be backlash and repercussion. I think if the voters go to the polls and, and, and help with this decision, there's a lot more people to answer to.
Brad, comment? Well, it, it appears right now, it is three-two. I mean, come on, let's get, get over it right now. It's three-two. It's three-two. It's gonna, you're gonna do something now. Whether it's one-point-zero, two-point-five or three-point-oh, I don't know, but the cost, the, the cost of living is going to keep on increasing. Okay, we're a five, we're, we're, we're at an inflationary rate right now. It does not turn around backwards in a year. This inflation rate is going to keep going. The cost of operating is going to keep going up and it's not on anybody that works there. It's not anybody to do anything here. It's a national inflation rate. Everything is going up dramatically. So, if you're going to ask for money, you better be covering the future. If you're asking for a three-year or a five-year millage, you better think about how much is it going to cost at the end. Don't just collect for what it is in the beginning.
I agree.
Because then you'll be spending more later.
Wiltsy, yes.
And, and I.
Go ahead.
One mil of Headley was bad enough and that went down in bad flames. But, but I can't, I can't agree with, with Commissioner Wiltsy. We can't Band-Aid this thing. This is, this is the same thing you're trying to say about Band-Aiding the cash. If you can't do it, if, if you can't do it at five hundred thousand, I don't know how you're going to do it at a million-two.
I'm going to go back to the original question. Is there a yes or no for the millage for November? I think you said yes, correct, Commissioner Simmons?
Yes, I wouldn't be for it because I don't know.
Did you say yes?
We're just making.
I say yes, Commissioner Wiltsy. I think you said yes. I know, we haven't gotten to the money part yet.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
You're just looking for consensus. You're not looking for a vote.
No, right now, I'm just in conversation.
Then I have, then I have no consensus.
Okay, so, Tim, do we have to have a, isn't there a date to, or is this what you're talking about, the August thirteenth to have it, your claim, your, okay, so let's put this on the committee of the whole. At least we know there's enough moving forward to continue the conversation.
Right. For committee of the whole, I'll prepare some scenarios for you. We've got, obviously, the scenario for reducing ourselves to a lockup right now. You've got those numbers. While we still need to, obviously, talk to Roscommon and so forth, they're in, in the ballpark. I'll also show you a budget that would continue us the status quo, which is pretty simple. The, the sheriff's office already submitted one that's a status quo budget that is continued operations as, as we know it today. My question for the board is, you recall this last year. My question for the board is, you recall this last year, we reduced our correction officer number by five. For this fiscal year, would you want them added back into those figures? Uh, and and consider that full? Do you want to just move forward with the scenario that we have today? Uh, how would you like that done? And there's no wrong answer. I just need to know what to prepare for you.
Can you give us both?
I can.
Why not just do both with what we're currently running at and what we were running at?
Just trying to make this simple. Throw option C in there, too.
Are you guys okay with that? I I guess having all those numbers.
Yeah, I'm fine. Basically, all you have to do is put in, put the cost of those individuals that. Are not working with us anymore. Is that correct?
In in a nutshell, that's it. I mean, there's moving parts to it, but right, I I have an idea of what to do.
Okay, Administrator slash controllers report.
I think one thing.
I'm sorry.
Make one more comment.
Go ahead.
We're not closing the doors completely. We have to have a lockup.
I understand.
Okay, we have to have a lockup, so. We're not eliminating everything.
That's correct.
They just sleep someplace else.
That's correct.
Okay, and I was, I was able to attend a meeting that the undersheriff asked. For the other day. And Oscoata County was there, their administrator and their sergeant from the police department, sheriff's office. They've never had a jail. I thought they had a jail and it burned down, but they've never had a jail. Their population numbers aren't very far off of ours. They can operate fine. With a lockup. They operate fine with a lockup. I mean. Take a look at that. We're not closing completely. We're not shutting the doors down and there's no, no inmates in there at all. It is not going to happen. It's not going to happen. They're just sleeping over at somebody else's house.
Thank you.
I have a comment, mate, just just to make sure that we're on the same page. You were saying that we're kind of apples for apples. With Oscoata County. And the budget numbers.
Say that. I just said the numbers aren't too far off.
You said the population.
Population number.
They have a three and a half million dollar county budget. I mean, you know, we're not talking.
Okay. Wait a minute, wait a minute, what? You've got to be careful when you say all this stuff about other counties and and. Roscommon County is a lot larger than us, has a higher, higher um uh uh evaluation than us. And they have a smaller budget than us. But why do they do that? Because their general bu- their general fund budget is smaller than ours. But their special funds are much larger than ours. Okay, so when you start comparing. One county's budget to another county's budget just by numbers. You got to look at the entire picture.
Right, I get that. I thought you said.
No, no, I just said, I just.
Administrator slash controllers report.
Got the written report amongst the documents of the meeting folder, but three other things I wanted to just touch on. Spent most of my day today in Gaylord at the Rural Michigan Opioid and Substance Abuse Summit. A very informative um uh day, to to say the least, a number of service providers were there talking about the services they provide. But I think more importantly, for those of us in attendance. Uh, the goals that we have in in the northern part of the state in terms of the services that are provided. And very valuable for me to know this, so that when we have our next opioid committee meeting. Now, we can talk about where some of those issues are and then talk about how we might be able to address them here in Ogumaw County. Uh, some things we're just not going to be able to answer. One of those was the. Question about a methadone clinic. I guess there's only one right now in the northern part of the state and that's in Gaylord and it's pretty well full. Uh, the group today was told there might be another one coming to the Traverse City area in the next couple of years. Uh, that's one of those things that, in my opinion, we would not be able to solve on our own is Ogumaw County, but if we had a few other counties wanted to. Supplement. Costs with their opioid dollars, that that might be something that we could do. I absolutely know nothing about the marketing of such a thing, how it would work on a business uh side. So a lot of work would have to be done. But it was very good to hear some of those targeted issues uh from a group that's right there on the ground dealing with the opioid issues. And we also saw a number of statistics that were helpful. Um, the. Number of overdoses across the state was actually reduced in the last year by about a thousand, so it's just in raw numbers. Down from about twenty four thousand down to twenty three thousand, so that's a good uh trend. But on the negative side, the number of overdoses that involve meth were going up. In particularly going up in the northern part of the state. Uh, so while we've got kind of a mixed bag there. Uh, there is a group called the Northern Michigan Opioid Response Consortium. That's the group that put on the the summit today. Uh, we are part of their region and it is uh for. Just geography, just about anything uh north of M fifty five is part of this uh group. It does include Gladwin and Claire as well. So a couple of counties leading to the south. Uh, if uh be a part of that consortium, the membership is only a hundred dollars a year. I mean, to me, it's a no brainer to join up. But just the the resources that they were able to provide in one day's seminar was fantastic and would be well worth the. Hundred dollars and that's within my uh spending authority, so I think we'll do that, uh just to get them. Uh, or get that resource available to us. Some of their members have already attended some of our committee meetings. Uh, periodically, it hasn't been a consistent thing. Uh, but they're aware of us anyway, and so that was helpful to know. But I think for that hundred dollars to get those resources would be well worth it. Um, I could go on a lot about that, but I'll I'll spare you, but it's a very good uh summit. The uh members of the law enforcement committee and I met with the jail stakeholders on Tuesday. And we were able to clarify some misunderstandings about the proposal that's on the table right now, and I think you've already uh said, Commissioner Scott. Uh, the proposal would include a twenty four seven lockup. I think for whatever reason, there was a concern that it wouldn't be a twenty four hour operation. That it would only be during daytime hours, not the case at all. And then there was also a question about um. The need for assigning road officers to do transports. The proposal does not include that as an option. We would do the transports with correction officers. So it was good to have the group together to clarify some of that. We talked some numbers back and forth. I thought it was a good meeting overall, just to get all the issues on the table. Uh, and then finally, particularly for Commissioners Scott and Simmons, we do have bargaining dates. Uh, finally, I can set aside August fifth and August eighth. We will have all five units on those uh two days. So roughly eleven o'clock till four, four thirty in that range. Uh, August eighth is a board meeting day, so we've got a hard stop at four o'clock. We have our opioid committee at four thirty. Uh, so we will have no choice but to stop by then, but we only have two units on that day, so that shouldn't be a problem.
I have a question, excuse me. My last question. So we have nothing on the on the first and the second?
Correct.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yes. Uh, on the committee of the whole meeting next week, uh in addition to the jail millage discussion, though, we will have a closed session to discuss. Bargaining strategies with our attorney and with the co-employers. And so all of our elected officials will be invited. Uh, to attend as well the courts uh to just talk about uh what this is going to look like from our perspective. And at that point on Monday, we will be off and running uh Monday, the fifth. So that's that's good news. That's um, you know, we would always like to have started this in January, but that's not realistic either. But it's good to have this on the books now and we'll be off and running.
Questions for the administrator?
I have no. No.
Uh, elected officials and department head reports. Clerk.
Uh, Brett Gilner, you're Ogumaw County Clerk. Um. Just want to remind everybody that early voting starts this Saturday, the twenty seventh. At the county building from eight thirty to four thirty. Um. And I want to publicly thank my staff. Um, for. Everything to do with elections. It's been a lot. Uh, and they have really embraced everything and are trying to learn as much as they possibly can. And the last couple of weeks, we. Are just. Knocking it out of the park, so. Um, just want to show my appreciation to them. So Saturday, twenty seventh through the. Following Sunday, August fourth. Every township. Is able to come in and vote early. They can bring their absentee ballot in. If they have requested one, you can vote your absentee ballot. I'm expecting a lot of people. And. That's it.
Treasure? Sure?
I don't have.
Bill, I miss you. Hi, I know you were going to say yes. Come on up, sir. Nice to see you.
Thank you. This time, my name is Phil Durst. I'm representing Michigan State University Extension. Uh, just wanted to let you know that today we received with great anticipation nasal swab kits. These are a test for high pat avian influenza, bird flu, of cattle so that they can exhibit at the fair. Right, we cannot take lactating cattle to the fair nor cattle that are dry cattle that is last two months before pregnancy, uh pregnancy. But we can take um young stock to the fair and beef cattle to the fair. Um, but if any of them have been housed on a dairy farm, they will need to have a negative. Avian influenza test by nasal swab. And so today we received the test kits. They've been distributed to our forest leaders and. We are looking at cattle, I'm sure, and looking forward to having this thing stuck up their nose on both sides.
Question.
Yes.
What happens? Obviously, they'll be sent home with their positive. What is that?
The fifth, there was a positive herd.
What happens? These are the cattle coming into the fair I'm talking about is what you're talking about, right?
Mm-hmm.
The Ogumaw County Fair. If one comes back positive, what? They obviously have to go home with that animal. What happens to that herd? They quarantined for what? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's it's excellent question. Um, first of all. I don't expect our herds to turn up positive.
Fingers are crossed.
Fingers are crossed, right? Um, and I would generally say that that. A farmer will know whether his herd is positive simply by response in a dairy herd.
Okay.
However, if. An animal shows up at the fair and is positive, then it will reflect back on the dairy farm where it was housed. And that herd will be, I am sure, declared positive and be quarantined.
How long have they quarantined for?
And I wish I could say definitively. I'm thinking thirty days, but I'm not convinced on that.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. But that would be the case. They'd follow up and 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 because then you have a positive test for the herd. However. I don't want to discourage cattle coming into the fair.
Go ahead.
That's all I have about that.
I'm sorry.
Any other questions? I have a question. Well, uh, one other statement. I just want to make sure that that we understand this. Even if they are negative tests, they are not allowed to ride midway rides, the cattle that is.
Um, can you put your EDC hat back on?
Uh, well, that's a department. I'm not, I'm not, it's not a department, so I can come back for public comment and do that. Unless unless it's okay with the chair.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Phil Durst. I'm representing Ogum County EDC. Charlie, I have workshop flowers. Is that what you were?
Yeah, I was wondering, since we just confirmed today our workshops, could you tell us?
Yes.
All of them and the dates?
I, we have two and and Trump and Commissioner Wiltie, right, is is the chair. And you pass those out, is the chair of our education committee. We have two workshops coming up that are free. That fit into every official's budget, okay? These are, one is on customer service and the other is on QuickBooks. And so these uh these workshops are being taught, the QuickBooks is being taught by an accountant with.
Fifth year old. Whirlander.
That's it, that's the one, right? And and the other workshop is being taught by Big Al Salz Barnes and Dave Klaus on customer service. Now, this, of course, is is for businesses, but it's also for for front office people in um. In government, in in medical, in in any kind of field where customer service is important. And so we're glad to invite y'all. Um, but of course. We do ask you to register for these free workshops. Again, it's part of EDC, working to help businesses succeed and to grow in Ogumaw County.
I like this work, this QuickBooks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any, any department heads or elected officials on the phone? Jeff, I see you on there.
I don't have anything today. Thank you.
Anybody I missed on the phone? Members on the floor, commissioners? Motion for adoption?
No.
Commissioners reports, Commissioner Wiltie.
Um, past Tuesday, Mills Township had a special meeting regarding the library. I've been keeping you guys posted about libraries. Only been open one, one day a week. With funding issues. It was good to see that the um. The township board unanimously decided they had their uh the township attorney there. He came up. And they decided to um put this on the November. Um. Ballot for a millage, uh, I think one, one oh mil. For the residents of Mills Township, if or not they want to support the library. So it was good to see.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because the library, again, is a is a vital entity over there. Um, and I do feel confident that that will be supported. Um, our transit director started this past week. I know Tim's been in contact with him closely. I stopped in there on Tuesday and saw him. He's really, really excited uh to get underway out there. The people I talked to out there are excited to have him. So we're looking forward to what Tony's going to bring to the the table there. And then just one item, and I had brought it up earlier, and and this item is another one of them deals that makes me lose sleep. So we have these four countywide villages. Between we have the transit, the EMS, the Commission on Aging. And the veterans. And these are all villages of extreme importance to many different residents of our county that really rely on these. And you know, we know what we're facing. We know the issues that's going on and and how hard it is to ask for more money. But what really, really bothering me is, you know, and I understand where where our voters are coming from is, you know. They're spending money and there's a few DDAs that are capturing some of this money. And I think more than I, I think now more than ever because money is so tight, you know, and we do have a lot of villages. Obviously, social media is so simple now. I think it's more of a problem now than ever, and people who didn't know about it are now getting educated about it. And I'm receiving a lot of phone calls. I mean, my my township's the largest township in the in the county and receiving a lot of phone calls. A lot of social media exposure about the disappointment and and the local government and. You know, why is it like this and why does it have to be like this? And I support DDA to a point. I think DDA is reformed for some of the right reasons, and I think they do a lot of great things. But it is very, very frustrating to see that we have four countywide villages. That again are so extremely crucial to this county, to our residents. And there is two DDAs that are capturing money from these villages. Um. I mean, I know it's pretty late in the game now at this point. Um, I I did contact the DDA president, West Branch Township. And I'm trying to get ahold of the city DDA president. To see if they realize the importance of this matter and the importance of these villages to pass. And to see if they could call a special meeting to not capture this. I mean, it, at the end of the day, I mean, it's real plain and simple. It's it's not right for people in Mills Township. Who want to support the transit, that want to support. The EMS, that want to support the veterans, that want to support the Commission on Aging. And a portion of that money is going to West Branch City DDA. A portion of that money is going to West Branch Township DDA. It's not right. That's where I'm at.
Tim, did you want to speak on that at all?
Commissioner Wiltie's a hundred percent correct. It's uh unfortunate uh the way the statutes uh at the state level read. Uh, there was a change a number of years ago, might be as many as ten years ago now, where we thought the legislature and the governor would sign a. Change that would have exempted these uh special elected villages, exempt them from capture. They did not. At the last minute, they instead uh. Harbed out Detroit Institute of Arts, uh. Detroit Zoo Millage, and there was one other one that impacted metropolitan Detroit area only and left the rest of the state. Uh, to the current situation. Um, as as at least two commissioners will will remember here in the last few years, we've had a couple of agreements come in, one from Ogumaw Township. And one from Rose City, uh where we were able to negotiate an agreement that stated to uh. They would not capture those villages. So in Ogumaw Township and in Rose City, they don't capture. Uh, unfortunately, we have no leverage to bring the other two to the table. We would be strictly at their mercy if they don't agree. This, that's just the way it is, the way the statute is, they can collect it. Uh, I do appreciate Commissioner Wiltie's approach, contacting the DDAs and asking them to voluntarily not collect that. Uh, I would like to see that in some sort of official action, so it isn't a one year thing that would continue through at least the life of the. Current DDA plans, but nevertheless, that's where we are totally at their mercy. Uh, it may be uh. Uh, true. true that all the members of the DDA don't realize that, but it it is the fact. And I do know the treasurer and the equalization director have been working with the local communities to confirm what those DDA boundaries are, so the calculations can be made, but also to raise this very same issue. Like I said, we've made progress on half of them, but we have two that are are still there that again, we have no leverage to bring them to the table, but perhaps voluntarily they'll make a decision and do the right thing.
Can we put this on for committee of the whole? And can we get the amount that they capture from each one of these villages? How much money? So that way there's actual facts. Commissioner Scott.
Well, the only thing I had to report on was the airport and Commissioner Simmons did that at last month, last week's meeting. So I I have nothing right now.
Commissioner Mayo.
Oh, I went to Rose City and they're gonna put a millage on for a cop. They have enough money to hire one, I guess, but they don't have enough for benefits or anything, so they're gonna put in some millage on for that. And Good Art is gonna update one of the fire trucks, get rid of one and pick up a different one. Pretty much.
I went to the ribbon cutting for the transit. That was great. And that took place on the eighteenth and Thursday. So I was glad of the turnout. There was more people than I thought that would be there and everybody seemed to be in awe of that new building and how nice it's going to be for the transit buses and keeping them clean with the with the the wash box that they get to wash them out so they can keep them clean in the wintertime, keep them clean in the summertime. On my, on my rounds in the last by a couple of weeks.
Go ahead, Commissioner Simmons.
Is that some people think that the commissioners are anti-jail and that is really not, that is not true. We're not anti-jail. But we know the jail costs X amount of dollars. And we know our budget, you know, for for the taxes that come in, six point seven million dollars we're going to get. And the jail's two point two million dollars right now. So I think thirty percent of the budget. So I'm not anti-jail. I'm just wondering how we're going to pay for it. And if anybody has some great ideas, I'm sure we'd all be willing to listen to that. But the only way I see right now is through through a millage. Because, you know, we're not like regular retail people. We can't just raise our prices. And like other people do to take care of their losses, but all we have is the the villages that we have. And if the people decide yes or no, like they did with the Headley. So we're not, bottom line is, we're not anti-jail. We have a great jail here. It's a nice jail. But with the budget that we have right now, the money we have coming in and all the other expenses that we have that people don't really see. I don't know how how we can afford to maintain it. Love to be able to maintain it. We had a million to cover. It'd be be wonderful. I would even consider closing the deal. I just don't know how we're going to maintain without going bankrupt. And I feel like we're about bankrupt now, to be honest with you, personal opinion. So I just wanted to clear that up with the people that we're not anti-jail. I don't think we ever have been. Thing is scratching our head trying to figure out how we're going to pay for it. That's all I have since our, since our last meeting that we had.
I have nothing to report, nothing to report. Oh, gosh, Commissioner Simmons.
We have a budget meeting tomorrow. Tomorrow at noon at the annex.
You have a what?
A budget meeting tomorrow at noon at the annex. I just want to make sure everybody clarified where that's going to be, because it is a change of venue.
Is that it?
That's it.
What was that, Commissioner Scott?
No, the old gosh.
Any general public comment in the room? Come on up, sir.
Hey, I think I've seen this guy before.
You know the rules?
He's back. Hi, my name is Phil Durst and I am wearing my Oklahoma County resident citizen hat alone.
Thank you.
I wrote this down.
Go ahead, sir.
I want to commend you for grappling with difficult issues for which there is no easy answer or any clear cut answer. And doing so with thought, sensitivity and civility. Through your diligence and hard to read my own writing. Though you may disagree, and whatever you decide, there will be detractors who say there's a wrong decision. Yet you're working ahead and you're going forward on these things. And so I commend you for your, and thank you for your difficult service to the citizens of Ogleman County.
Very much appreciated.
Appreciate that.
Any other public comment in the room? Come on up, sir. Do you know the rules? Come on up. I'll read them to you. Okay, come on up. Have a seat. The rule, there's five rules. They're pretty simple. State your name for the record. Speak only to the chairperson. Stand behind the podium, which you can sit, sir. Limit comments to three minutes or fewer and follow the direction of the chairperson when speak.
Hi, I'm Chris Winter. Most of the time, I was a student trainee and an intern for accounting. Ms. Simmons here, she talked about can't raise prices or taxes, but the retail world sinking, raising tide reads all, raises all boats. So we can raise fees and fines. And one of my sayings is don't do the crime unless you can do the fine. And Ms. Gilner, how many dog licenses are out right now paid for?
I don't know that. So that would be the treasurer.
Sir, sir, yeah, you gotta see, you gotta talk to me.
I'm sorry, if you would ask her. But once upon a time, we had like ten thousand maybe.
Okay.
And the animal control department had a forty, forty five thousand dollar profit every year. That would go back to the general fund. And that animal control officer was salaried. There'd be seventy, hundred hour work weeks. Hundred dollars a week sometimes. I've even worked with them. There's been times I go home after midnight. In fact, it was thirty years ago, forfeit lying last time I get drafted. But the animal patrol officer, he's more than just a dog catcher. The state calls him husbandry officers. And they're also deputized. Your dad was deputized. He was, he was like, is that him?
But no.
He was like a agent for William A. Hanger. Those guys were, they just worked great together. I have no interest in being the animal control officer.
Maybe hiring, so.
Yeah, I hear. But these like future deputies. My dad's had offers from the US Marshals before. Fifty years ago. He was even buying one eye.
Do you have anything else?
Nope.
You have a minute remaining. That's it, sir.
Because because I played dog catch once upon a time. The undersheriff and dad's hand me, take the truck and pick up dogs. Oh, our dogs held ten days. They're getting rid of anymore. Because I'm thinking this clinic that they take them to, they keep them forever.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thanks for putting up with me.
Thanks for your information. Any further public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion carries. We are adjourned at six twenty nine. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Have a good night.